And to the Republic for which it's seen one nation, under God, and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody. All right, follow me in order. We have a forum. Take a motion to approve the attendance. Second. All favor I. Both. Okay, morning, Rich, morning. Um, not much for the report as far as maintenance go over. Standard, we're gonna blade and stuff like that. Oh, we've got moisture. I still don't receive anything from. B K on any sort of ideas for the building and stuff yet, but we'll get there. Um, one thing. It's spring. Not that we haven't had the issue carried on for years and years and years about rocks and the ditch. But. We're seeing more and more new ones. We just cleaned a ditch and then somebody threw one more in that and we cleaned it. We had a conversation on them, but I, I, I think it's getting to be, you know, we see them too where they're pulling trees out of the fence line and throwing over on our side of the fence line, which isn't, you know, you can argue whose trees are whose, but if you're the one pulling them, take care of them, so. Um, maybe kind of asking for a little bit of support from the board if we do start sending letters out that we've got kind of the bag. I'd say that's a no-no because. Well, the, the rocks aren't there to begin. We, we've cleaned ditches before and, and end up when we put bird back in the field, there's rock and we get yelled at. Well, we didn't put the rock there to begin with. Right. We're not trying to put rock back in the field when we clean, but we're noticing now more and more. Some larger, some smaller ones, but some larger ones is randomly thrown back in the ditch and it's just, you know, it's a, sometimes it's an appearance thing, but our ditches are supposed to be kind of obstruction free. I'm not saying that we haven't been aggressive on it. Even before I got here, I don't think we were that aggressive on taking care of rocks when they were putting them around driveways and things, but when you start seeing blatant, the blatant disposal of rocks, the ditches, we gotta kind of take care of that a little bit. So if we can get some support from you guys, it's the, we're gonna send letters out, people are gonna start complaining. At least just letting you guys know that you may get phone calls too. We do proceed with plenty more letters out than normal. So, hope you guys are fine on the road ditch. Well, we could start addressing that too. I mean, we could, uh, start sending letters out. It's gonna, you know, we could, and some of those we could probably, I know in the past, we've, uh, went and done ditch cleaning and reestablished the right of way line and let them know before that we're gonna, and some of them, you're right, some of them are right up to the. So, I mean, we could start chasing some of that down too. If you, if you see it. Do, I mean. We gotta start addressing the fact that the right of way is. Right away. A right of way and it's structured and pretty and, you know. Yeah, you own to the center line, but that doesn't give you the right to, to farm it. We'll try to be a little bit more aggressive on some of those things, but the rock's kind of frustrating is that we gotta spend time going out. Well, we don't wanna spend time running out picking them up, so we wanna contact them and make them more responsible for the people that are throwing rock stuff in the right away. So just kind of a heads up there. And then, uh, I've got an agreement for, this is for a, a bridge on Dogwood that we've, we're gone with W H T S for a while. Um, just the, the federal aid agreement for the construct of that or for the payment for using our H B P funds for that bridge. Um, estimated cost of six hundred thousand dollars. And I think that'll be, um, I think we, they'll take eighty percent of that construction cost and we have to fund. Um, from part of market fund, so. Um, we can get this, uh, agreement signed and approved and we can continue on with submissions and lettings. All right, is there a motion to, uh, sign the agreements for the D O T on, uh, Dogwood Bridge project? You've got a motion, certainly. All right, any other discussion on it? Here none, all favor I. I, both. Backy next week, if you could put on the agenda, um, I'm gonna have a resolution for authorizing for the, the board awarding the paving contract for Dogwood. Now, arising the engineer to. Yeah. It's not important. We've got our apparent little bids back on. But saving, we're doing whatever bridge is gonna be. The bridge is a little bit behind schedule, so. Um, I think we have an apparent, if you're a little bitter, it's hard on that.
So this one right here.
Where were you up to it test?
Well, this, this is the same project.
No, that's, that's the bridge project. I'm giving them an update on our letting head last week through the O T. So the, the good thing is, is we we anticipated, I guess I budgeted for one point eight million for that construction. Got lower, lower bids and I'll, I'll go through that with you guys next week, but if we can get that on the agenda, I mean, that project. Sounds good.
If you know what you want on the.
I think that's all I've got for you this morning. Any questions, Rick?
No.
Oh, I do have one more thing. Uh, part-time moors. I wanna bump up some of the thing a little bit. If it's okay, I know we're kind of these thing, but I wanna keep some good mower guys around and right now we're pending this to the quick start. So if I can, I might, I'm gonna evaluate where we're at, but I wanna bump up a little bit right now. We've got one at sixteen bucks an hour, one at sixteen from project. We need to kind of bring some of that up a little bit, because one of our guys offered another job somewhere else. We can kind of like get close. Not that I'm gonna play the game of trying to match, but as a conscientious person who wants this kind of people working with, so. Yeah, especially for part-time. Part-time and we're not talking a whole lot of hours or a whole lot of dollars when it comes down to the increase would be. It might be more than a dollar per hour.
You'll get that through before this.
I'll do that before you. This kind of a heads up. Um, yeah, I think you're send letters. We have my support. Oh, yeah, and then I appreciate that. I think we, we gotta stay on it. It's not right. No, it's not. And it's kind of, in the grand scheme of things, we've got bigger fish to fry, but at the same time, it's getting ugly out there. It gets pretty trashy if you wanna, or at least clear.
I've talked with a couple times where they rolled rocks out on the road and they roll them down in the ditch.
What's that?
Couple times the main dinger is the rolled rocks out when they're grading and they roll them down in the ditch.
The big one.
And grass grows up around some of us do more.
Well, we need to, if that's the case, then that, we don't need to roll everything in the ditch either.
Yeah, I mean, I understand they got no place to put it, but.
Well. Your market.
Go back and get it.
Yeah, go back and get it. Yeah, just kind of shows you how low our road maps are. We're pretty thin.
Yeah, it's amazing that they haven't come up before, but every once in a while, see when it pops up.
Well, and I don't, I don't get notified of that. They don't tell me that. Yeah, I should be.
Don't imagine, think about it, just in the, getting the road graded and it pops up and it might just roll right on out.
No, this, yeah, we'll say on that too, if we have that happen. Um, and then you guys got my email about the grant. Uh, we got awarded. But yeah. That's good. Actually, we took ownership of the U T V last Monday already. Our stuff's on order. Uh, we are looking at a tractor to run the mower during put a grant in for that. We're probably gonna find something that's used right. Soften the blow a little bit because of the size tractor we need to kind of pull is bigger than what we normally have. Start looking at a hundred and forty-five horse versus thirty, so. The dollars go up when you start getting into that kind of a town, so we'll be looking around. My tire. Actively searching and still being conscious of budget. Sounds good. All right. Okay. Oh, drainage. Well, I think there's some planes, right? It's like one, one side of the road on there. I'm looking to prove the, uh, one plane, so. Go ahead. Walk by Mark. One second. Second, my anus, I need to step in on it. All favor I. I, both. Then you've got work order.
Possible. Uh, so enter Kenan, then I sent you guys an email, a picture, kind of word of what he said again. Him and his family own all that land around there and he's wanting to connect a private tile in one district to a private town in the other district that'll go underneath, um, Aspen Avenue there. Jacob Hagan was in Friday and I kind of got his opinion on it. He was gonna call Andrew and talk to him. And kind of look back at some other maps and stuff that we have to see. Cause he's wondering if it'd be more feasible if he's having problems downstream. It would be more feasible to fix the main line down there or to hook on that way. But he said either way, they'll be annexed in. I mean, cause the land are already in the district, but.
So he explained it to me was that at one time they've been, and I might, I, I have to go up there and look and stand there and listen to, but at one time their water was going the other way. And then they switched to where the water was going and up to the end or petition. So they petitioned out of that district, which they must, there must be a minimum assessment. They're actually in both districts, the way I understand it. But he's been looking at, I don't know if they've done the surveying, I don't know, but we could maybe split that water, go the other way. And, and you're right, there's something wrong down there. It's D D, the D D eight.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, that water, there's water on, on top of the ground.
Yeah, it's low.
Well, yeah, he's got water there, but actually that whole ditch and we, we dug in an open ditch on part of that, but it's still all the way for over a mile. There's water on top of the ground. I don't know where it water.
I looked back several years ago and I saw that, um, they were gonna go through a project and say that Jim stubbed it.
Well, they wanted to dig a ditch the whole way. It was pretty expensive, so they kind of decided not to.
Well, there's three off his land going northwest and eighteen is going south.
Yep.
Yeah.
And it looks like he's gonna pile eighteen and dump it in three.
Into three.
He wants to take, put some of the water back into three. So I.
I didn't think it across the district.
They're still in three or they're not.
So part of the land is in eighteen and part of it's in three.
Right, and he wants to take water from eighteen and dump it in three.
Yeah.
Yeah, stick right there.
And by the way, I talked with Jacob, if, if it is something that's feasible to go that way, we would have to annex those lands in and to three.
And that's, and that's the one we share with Winnebago.
Yes.
The two, three.
And that's the one that's probably going through replating.
There, I guess, I mean, they're doing this all on their own, other than, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause that's what he said. He's fine flipping the bill for it. He just wants to make sure that he can do it. So, and then Jacob was gonna talk to Colin. Um, since he's doing the whole two, three replas.
Yep.
And just kind of see what. Cause he's not necessarily annexing those in, it's just like right on the end.
Once you're, and once you're in a district, I don't think you can really get out.
Can't get out.
And I really think.
Then I think you could cross train it.
Get the minimum set, but I don't know how many years ago they would have opted out of that. I really haven't.
Cause he said those lands would be double in. Or not double annexed.
Well, they'd be stigable.
So can you cross district line?
Can you cross district lines? Cause you look into that.
If you can prove you can take the tile the other way, I don't see why you can't.
It's happened before.
You shouldn't do.
Well, we know it's happened.
You can't do it, you couldn't do it.
Need some further research and I've got paper on that, doing some research and plumbing.
Well, that's what I told him, I'd use the, you know, and stuff, but if they can make it work and for less money, I feel what he wants to do, they still either like to do the open ditch, take the water the other way. But he's looking at the lesser of the two costs for the dip for that. One district would be unfit, the other one's really not. There's someone getting some of that water.
So they have to make sure three could take that extra water if you did go that way, so.
Oh, it also.
There's three hundred.
What's that?
Yes, it is. Um, I don't know if we've done anything with it, but I think it's in pretty good shape.
Not a number.
Not a fall. I mean, it's like, I'll, I'll listen to it, so.
I included Rick in on that email, just says if they do end up going under Aspen, that's county road zone.
Is there, is there a road crossing there already?
I don't, I was thinking back there, they go deeper. When you look at, when you look at that drainage map, when you look at the ones on G I S, one of that drainage map says the road is the break line and then the new one shows it further to the northwest.
And if you look at beacon, it shows it to the northwest.
Yeah, right, yep. And so I'm like, well, and you, and then you do that. I don't know if I emailed it. You made a three dimensional, the color, everything's flat in there. It's hard to even tell where the actual line should be, but.
Oh, you can see it out there if you drive it.
If you drive it, but I'm just looking at a map without driving out there. It's like everything is flat and I mean, there's, there's one spot where there could be a break.
That water that he wants to take to the northwest, they're gonna have to make some pretty deep cuts in there, but you won't be able to do it. I'm like, stay on, I don't think they surveyed it yet or now that they're talking about doing.
Well, I'd say if I get the parents or verification if it's legal or not, and then see what the process is and then have to pay for it.
Other than take a word.
Says they can handle it, if three can handle it.
So I don't know if at that point they might have to have a meeting and three has to okay it or we can just okay it or what.
Yeah, I'm not sure. So I got, yeah, so him and Colin, he did get hold of Colin and he was gonna call Andrew too and kind of figure out what best scenario would be in.
Okay.
We're gonna remeet on, remeet on it, but.
Yeah. I just told him to get ahold of you and I said they probably want to talk to the engineer.
Good. That it? Yeah, thank you. Oh, we have a plans. We do have some. We got questions, comments on the claims? If not, I would take a motion to approve the claim. Oh, wait, open the second, second. Yeah. All favor I. I, both. Come on, you got any reports? Nope.
No barrel, no litter.
I'll see your. Budgets at nine. I mean. Resolution. Um, review amendments for fiscal year twenty-four. Budgets at public hearing date and time.
Yeah.
Let me know.
Shooting for.
This will be the last one, that's rather right.
That shooting date twenty-seven.
May twenty-seventh?
Well.
That's holiday.
Never mind.
Okay.
Hmm. I was gonna get it in this week. And that'll be in next week, so. I was going for the thirteenth.
Thirteenth?
Yeah.
Yeah, I need a motion to approve the, uh, fiscal year forty-four budget amendment.
Or just, just set the hearing date.
Hearing, yeah, the hearing date.
And time.
For that, uh, nine o'clock, May thirteenth. Their motion?
I'll make that note, I'll start again.
Okay, any discussion? Here none, all favor I. Both. Building grounds, anything? Still gotta talk to the elevator people.
Yeah.
I think enough time to sit in for fifteen minutes, see it through. I see we got a.
Hey, well.
Go ahead.
No, well. Well, back here about five, six years ago, we had problems of water leaking in our basement at church. And we had the same type of windows, only they weren't quite as high. And I got in touch with a company that does window wells that goes over them. Oh, and they were like quarter inch thick polycarbonate, see-through. This aluminum hinges and stainless steel rivets, and they kind of went over it so that all the water would come down and run out. And I wanna know if you want me to keep pursuing that, looking into it and get a rough idea. Or is that something you don't wanna do? Cause it's basically a good well and it's gonna sit down on the cement. And if then anybody had to get out that window, it would just flip off. And, uh, I know that a two hundred fifty pound man can stand on them and I thought at the time, don't quote me on this, they could take five hundred pounds of impact like a rock. Which is pretty, but it is quarter inch thick.
Right.
It's pretty thick, so, so, but it would move all your water away from the building and it would keep the leaves and everything out of the, crashing out of there. Something you want me to keep looking at.
I love it, no, no.
They were cheap at the time.
Isn't that draining at all?
It's not that one. It's just that one, cause those were full of leaves and they were fine. There was just the one closest to the building over here.
If you go up there and look.
There's really no green.
Yeah, well, if you go up there and look, you'll see the, the brick is just.
But why is the one drain and the other one not? I don't get.
I'm wondering where would they go to.
Yeah. And there's a sidewalk right there, so the water just sits there anyway.
Okay.
But it washes, if you look at the top of the building, the brick is washed. There's a spot in there where the, it's just the water's run, it's run off so many years, it just washed the bricks.
So you don't want to be used to it at all.
No, it's kind of far as I'm concerned, missing everything. So.
Getting wrong.
Yeah, I mean.
But between the combination of the two things, maybe putting a cover over these things, would anybody be opposed to having something like that there? I mean, if they're see-through.
We can get out.
See-through, so you're not losing really.
Not losing your daylight and then the longer you get out of them, that's all that matters.
Yeah.
So throw the fire, maybe both windows and you gotta be able to get out of them.
You don't want water, and more water coming in, you don't need to.
Right.
But they kind of roll down and then they come out, they just move it away from the cement, get it away from the building.
Yeah, check into it.
I'll check if it's more than.
Yeah.
I just thought I'd bring that up.
Oh, fine. Takes care of the water.
It's the way we need to have the tile deadened out of there, the way I'm gonna put it, it is.
But that doesn't mean we still don't look at that up above. Have some extra look at that.
Oh, and, um, Randall looked at it and deflected it further out because it was nailing a certain part of the.
Right.
Yeah, next time it pours, just come and check it out.
They're quite a ways out if you notice them, because they're catching a lot and then that's like a containment basin, so it's gonna run in your window.
Right.
And thank you to Colton.
Yes, we opened big.
I started and I'm like, yeah, this isn't, I'm not getting anywhere. And it, it, there's so much water already there, should have had it, thrown it further out.
So does some pump, I mean.
That was, he thought about that.
It's a possibility. Is there tile around the building?
Well, maybe there's a drain in it, probably.
Must be.
Couple of them. I mean, I don't know, there'd have to be something.
Must be, cause there was no, there was no water in those.
The, the.
They wouldn't be a concrete.
Lid on, the cover off, and he put his hand down there and he goes, yeah, it's just dirt. And I say, yeah.
Oh, it just seeps away.
So it's so thick.
But if we wanted to deflect that, it wouldn't have such a.
Right, and I don't know if this is compacted in that way as well.
Probably because the iron is huge drain.
Yeah. That's okay, there's just nothing against the amount of water you're taking off of that corner. Well, if you could deflect.
What you're going on the brick.
And that.
A lot of water right down there.
There's a lot, cause it's every direction of, of the roof is going right there in that corner. Cause that's gonna take out trees, so it will eventually.
I'll look at it and see if.
Not getting any better.
Get a little Midwest come up here and see if they can, if there's gutters up there, get that figured out.
Let's have somebody look at it.
Call Midwest, they. Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, and there still wasn't water at the end, but I did hear a grip and the, yeah, so I don't know, maybe that's just something that's gonna happen, but I don't know where that, I don't know where that was going.
But the entryway, I didn't look, so I should have entryway dried up.
I get it.
I haven't stood at one place to start. Yeah, I'll get ahold of them too and see.
Just bring a leak somewhere else if you pick one.
They put bubble gum in here and start something over there. Chew more. Yeah, this probably action is. Sometimes.
It is.
Yeah. Um. Moaning, I see you had a.
That you sent to them.
I, I hope that was okay.
Yes.
Yeah, it looked good to me.
I just stole something from a city. Never good.
Perfect. Put one together for the windows?
Not yet. I figured that was a little less.
Yeah, that's, I was just wondering.
The grass is kind of, it needs to know. Yeah, just a little bit.
And then I give it a chance to recover, spend more of the data.
Yeah, anything else in the building? Water system improvement, uh, it's out for bid. I know there's been some people out there looking at it. And actually Jason told me, uh, pipe prices that actually come down from what he was estimating. Probably start to work that direction.
Contract that you're looking for, it's good.
Sounds like there's quite a few that are looking for that kind of work.
So all estate title bids were in last time too.
Yep. So I think hopefully a little luck, lots of good bids on that.
It will be after, will be before or after June? Uh, oh, I guess I got it in the budget, don't worry.
Yeah, so say that.
Yeah.
When is the hearing?
So I have to do that. That's what you're worrying about.
Yeah, I, I put the full amount that was left, so.
I think he's coming here the sixth, May sixth, we open them. By the time they go through them all and sign contracts, you know, a week or two, so it probably wouldn't get paid that high anyways.
So we might have to do it, but then.
For.
Yeah, maybe. I'll see, I'll see how that.
Figure it out.
Yeah, but I would say unless somebody really needs to go to work right away and you're gonna get it done within that month, month and a half and get a bill.
Hmm.
Kind of pretty, you know, that's, I just find it hard to believe we'd get it done that fast.
I think we're just lining up, but.
Yep. So. All right, what about that goes, Melissa on there?
Morning.
Morning.
Uh, May first in, um, Worth County, uh, the Papa John Entrepreneurial Center is going to have like a stakeholder input. Um, basically, we're just organizing a community informational session on, uh, what S V D C and the Papa John Center can do. So it's geared towards lawyers, CPAs, um, anybody who wants to start a business, anybody who wants to sell their business, anybody who wants to expand their business. So I have an ad in the paper coming out soon and then I will post it to our socials, but I'll put the link in the chat here too for anybody who's interested.
Sounds good.
Other than that, there's, I'm just switching gears and going over to working on a business in Winnebago County this week.
All right, good. Any questions from Melissa? Right on. Okay, thank you, Melissa.
You bet.
Okay, people's service, nothing going on there. Department heads. Anyone?
Um, I'll just give a quick update, sending down for a little bit of time here. Um, we did talk about the water tower out there where we're still getting people crawling up at the casino. On the jail movement, we met with Winnebago County, basically they, they didn't really say no, but they said we'd rather look somewhere else because they're having staffing issues. So we did talk to Mitchell County on Thursday. Um, I've sent out that twenty eighty to all you guys to take a look at. That will be going to the county attorney. But it sounds very possible that that's gonna go through and they'll be talking about it tomorrow. They'll need to help with it. Um, Mitchell County. Why does I think that's about it, what I have?
Okay. Sounds good to me. Any other department ads I have?
Supervisor Weekly, yes. Uh, we had the Windworth Vetco Executive Board meeting and we met, uh, four city ambulance and fire station. That is a pretty nice place. They got five bays. They got five ambulances and I think three fast cars and they said they had forty-four volunteers that would drive those ambulances, so it was really good tour of that place, good place to go look at for the western part of the county. Uh, other than that, I had the Windworth Vetco Advisory Board meeting, which was really good, cause the mayor's and everybody really spoke up. Got a lot of information out of there. Uh, the one thing I did want to bring to your attention that Terry Derby had mentioned to me was they're naturalists. They had lost their naturalist in Winnebago County. And that Winnebago County at the present time is looking to share a natural with a neighboring county. So I thought I'd bring it to your attention.
Be a good idea.
That's, that's with him.
What's that?
They have to have that discussion with Jim.
Yep, bring it to his attention. I just thought I'd run that you guys through. But, yeah.
Justify that position for both counties. They're, they're in the same boat we are.
Yeah, if you start, you know, when you're, we start having to let people go, we don't know whose gym's gonna decide to do.
Well, it'd be nice to keep, and we'll, we'll keep jobs and then help them out, help up.
Yep. So, I will bring it up to Jim.
Okay.
They are, they've lost their naturalist and they're looking to share.
Okay.
That's what I had.
Mark. In my here. Really. I'm going to, uh, recess the regular meeting.[1753.91] And we're going to. Have the public hearing on the fiscal year twenty-five Worth County budget. The motion by Mark to open the public hearing is their second. Alright, all in favor, I, I propose. Alright, public hearing is open, we're proposing fiscal year twenty-five Worth County budget. Any public has comments or questions, now is the time to speak. Let's see, it increased, was it fourteen point two?
Something like that.
I think that's right, yeah. Seems high, isn't it?
Smelling valuations.
Yeah, valuations all went up. And then, but on the flip side, our rollback has went the other way.
They rolled us back, they rolled, in other words, you got more, you're not paying tax on as many dollars for a hundred thousand.
And salaries went up, so all the benefits went up, health insurance went up, so I'm concerned about um. Our ICAP insurance going up, so that's, and the only place we could go up was general supplemental, so that's why we did that. And we can reassess it next year and see how everything shook out.
Yeah, we're seeing uh, we're protecting thirty to fifty percent increases in our liability insurance. Yeah, and then.
On its way down, hopefully.
Or the stop has been maintained, it's kind of creeping down, a little bit creeping down, um, health insurance. Can you shop something like that?
You probably could, um.
It's just when you get history with somebody.
A part of it, and and other issues, the, a lot of, and and I don't know how I work here with county, but a lot of insurance is actually pulled out of the great Iowa.
Why is that?
Because rising costs, they can't keep up with inflation, the cost of equipment, cost of the increases in value of your home. You had it happen to you, I know in your personal stuff, um, I do know that Farm Bureau, I told about Farm Bureau agents, several people had dropped out of the state. And they picked up a lot of business, whether that's good or bad, I don't know, but they'll have more losses, but yeah, uh, insurance is like. I don't mind is up thirty percent, I just grabbed a dollar the other day, so.
On one of my properties, I had, I got a letter that, sorry, we're leaving the state, your insurance is done with the state. So I had to go rambling and searching to get insurance, so it's.
But yes, we can shop, that's not the point.
Touchy right now that we're, yeah.
ICAP, ICAP has been good.
And they're, and it's actually a pool of.
I think overall, I think it's been fairly reasonable in comparison, but.
A lot of the time.
Well, unfortunately, it sounded like a feeling like that.
Well, and we insure a lot of stuff.
We do. And maybe we need to look at what we're insuring too, maybe we have. Then we need to do, sit down, do a real review on what we have for equipment listed, uh, what we have on insurance for buildings, you know, what would we do? You know, some of these buildings, will we replace? Shouldn't be entering.
Very true.
I mean, it's probably something we should do.
You can send it out.
We never done it since I've been on the board, actually.
Well, you did send it out a few months back. Quite a few months back, if I look through it, how long ago was that?
Yeah.
I remember getting it, I remember looking through it and it looked pretty good to me.
Two months ended up being two years to me, so.
Well, this is at least six, seven, eight months ago there.
They kind of determine what value goes on buildings and stuff, and.
Yeah, I'm sure equipment stuff right now, just to make sure we got what we need. Again, there's like I say, there may be some buildings on these locations, it's like, you know what, if they fall down, fine, we're not gonna, we're not gonna read, give us a reason to get rid of Johnson.
So that's the big drivers, a lot of it.
Yeah, it 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 just keeps going up, you know, my experience with insurance is uh, like all the years, I I moved from Wisconsin and. You you go with one company, I went with Sentry, and after three or four years, no claims, it goes up. And then I went to American Family, same thing, and it seems like they treat new customers better than long time customers.
The nuts in a lot.
To get you in the door.
And then they might zap you the next year.
Right, yeah, then you blend in with the average. Well, and it goes up.
The whole shopping thing is you're paying more for less coverage because your vehicles are getting older. So, you know, if you self-insure somewhat.
We we are here, our our health insurance for partial fulfillment, but it's good, yeah, we're going in that direction just to to cut some costs down. And hopefully save some money over time.
My repairs really went up too, you know, for like this, like, like if a vehicle gets, it's a deal or whatever, man.
Maybe we need to look at bigger deductibles, stand more of it. You know, if we can.
Is there anybody else in the public has any questions or comments? Not seen any comments on the. Alright, well, if there aren't any more comments, um, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the hearing.
I will second that.
Okay, all in favor, I, I. Okay, public hearing on the budget is closed, I will reconvene our regular session. And we'll take a look at resolution twenty twenty-four dash two zero, which is the uh fiscal year twenty-five elected official salaries. These are all posted, anybody can see them at any time, the resolution basically stating that uh. Salary increases for the elected officials, uh auditor will be fifteen point one four percent, which is because of a stipend for budget work. Uh attorney will be four percent, recorder will be four percent, sheriff will be six percent, supervisor chair will be four percent. The other supervisor is really four percent, and treasurer four percent. So. Whereas the Worth County Conversation Board meets annually to recommend a compensation schedule for elected officials, the fiscal year immediately following in accordance with Iowa code chapters three thirty-one. That nine oh five and three thirty-one dot nine oh seven. Whereas the uh compensation board, but on December sixth, twenty twenty-three, had made the recommendations to the elect, for the elected officials for the fiscal year. Uh, and these begin July first, twenty twenty-four. Therefore be resolved that the Worth County Board of Supervisors approves the following salary adjustments for the following elected officials for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I will make that a motion.
Yep, there's a second?
I'll second it.
Alright, any discussion? Hearing none, this uh roll call vote, Lowberg? So maybe? Stone, I. Well, if he carries, salaries are adopted. Okay, up next is uh resolution twenty twenty-four dash nineteen, and we proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-five. Whereas the Board of Supervisors has held a public hearing on Monday, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, received comments regarding the proposed twenty-four, twenty-five budget of expenditures and revenues. As was published for public notice in the April tenth and eleventh, twenty twenty-four, and to the county newspaper, noted anchor and a manly signal. And presented public hearing day, April twenty-second. Therefore, the Board of Supervisors hereby approves the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget as was presented and published. Budget certification attached. Adopted today. Is there a motion to approve the resolution for county budget?
So moved.
Alright, there's a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Lowberg? So maybe? Stone, I. The budget is duly adopted.
They've got her other than Peter Hill, right?
And I see one guy on there, so Josh is on there, but I'm Peter or.
Alright, we'll give him a few minutes, and soon he jumped on.
Got to get, got to go faster.
Yep.
You know, you guys might find this interesting because uh I worked in finance in Madison, Wisconsin, and moved up here after living there for seventy years and uh. The city down there, great place to to live, but it's uh, it's gotten very gentrified, very expensive to live here, the average rent is sixteen hundred dollars a month, you know? And uh the city finances are in trouble because when they got all that money from the federal government for COVID. They spent like it was, you know, manna from heaven, and they gave huge raises, and now. Was it three or four years later, we're facing a twenty-seven million dollar deficit. And uh that's kind of hard to catch up on, so they're they're looking for cuts. They don't like to cut down.
Problems gonna, they're gonna face for number of years down the road.
Yeah.
Peter Hill is now joined, apologies for interrupting, I don't know if you saw.
Yeah. Thank you.
Hi, are you ready for us?
One more.
Good morning.
Good morning, Peter.
Peter, you ready to roll on?
Alright, fantastic.
Floor is all yours now.
Alright, very good, well, again, we've got uh Josh and Darren here with uh Retirement Plan Advisors. And myself, and uh. Yeah, so we over the last uh couple of weeks, um, have gone back and done some research and uh. Josh and Darren and their team um went out and uh. Did a uh vetting of a handful of different uh vendors, we've actually ultimately looked at six different companies. What are called record keepers, um, probably in your world, you just know them as the company that has my uh retirement account. And uh ultimately have landed on one company that we think makes um a really good. Fit for you guys there in Worth County, and so kind of just as a reminder again here, there's two different things going on. There's one, which is the plan itself, um, so you as the, as the um employer, the county owns the plan. And then two is the underlying um record keeper that we would be choosing to help fund the assets. That the employees are deferring and that the county is uh contributing on employees' behalf as well, so. Uh, anyway, Josh and Darren have done the heavy lifting, I will uh turn it over to them and uh they'll run through things here for us. Go ahead, Josh.
Thank you, Peter, and thanks everybody for having us again, just a thirty second recap from three weeks ago, I'm sure you all remember. Uh, Vision Financial Group, which is Peter and Retirement Plan Advisors, we we presented to you about a ways to enhance your four fifty-seven and four one A. Uh, programs, uh, we solicited as Peter shared service and fee proposals from qualified providers, we did get six. Uh, we went over them with uh the county auditor and uh somebody from the benefits team, I think it was Teresa, and we're back, like we promised, with a, with a recommendation. Uh, and please jump in at any time, so as Peter shared, we did get six proposals, uh, the best good news is they were all from qualified firms. Uh, in the government space, uh, who've done uh meaningful work with governments, they understand the uniqueness of a public sector employer, you're non-ARISA. Uh, the rules are different. Uh, the total all-in price range for the six proposals, uh, and these again, all these fees are incurred by the employees were between one point one four percent. And one point nine five percent. Today, your all-in fees with Voya are one point three five percent. Um, so given that fee proposal and the expertise we found uh from all the providers, uh, when we presented them to the auditor. Uh, we are recommending the lowest cost provider, which is Lincoln Financial Group. Um, they're also one of the more experienced providers, they do hundreds of governmental plans with just over five billion dollars in assets. Um, let me pause there, uh, I don't know if the board would like to see additional detail on the analysis, we did go through it. With uh with Jackie, uh, we have individual fee proposals from all six, and then the formal proposal from Lincoln, which, woo, sorry about that, we had forwarded. Um, last week, uh, the the recommendation summary is to, as Peter said. Th- this is the county's plan, and it will always be the county's plan, but the underlying service provider contracts is what we're talking about changing. So to migrate the four fifty-seven B and four one A plans to Lincoln Financial Group. With plan and participant services from Vision and RPA. And these are the services that we had outlined uh last meeting, plan investment menu fiduciary services, provider oversight. So we're going to make sure that Lincoln actually does everything that they say they're going to do, that your plan documents are current, and that the plan is operating. In accordance with the plan design and the IRS regs, we did mention uh just in passing last time, secured two point O. There are ninety-two provisions that could impact your plan that are coming due in the next three years, and we would be working with Lincoln. And the county to pick the, you know, that the mandatory ones are implemented, and that the optional ones will make a recommendation on which ones make sense or not. Uh, Peter's group is going to handle enrollments and account reviews and provide the retirement counseling and financial planning. Uh, advice that's so needed to help people bridge from uh their pension to an actually complete financially secure retirement. And uh we're able to actually add all of that while reducing the cost by an estimated six thousand a year. I'll just go back one slide, that point two percent on the three million dollars of employees' money is about six grand a year. Um, it's not often that we can come to a board and say, we think we can do better, cheaper, but in this case, we actually feel that this is better, cheaper, which is why Peter just smiled, it's kind of exciting. Um, that's uh, that's it, that's what we had to come back, I'm happy to take any questions, um.
Uh, I'll just point out one thing um to jump on there with it, with uh what you said, Josh, is that this is a uh three-year. Um, price guarantee from Lincoln, so this is something that then, you know, RPA and. W- would help us envision go through again for years from now, um, to lock in any, you know. Um, whatever that would be, and presuming that there would maybe be additional assets, um, as time goes on, then uh. Hopefully, you know, some of the underlying pricing can continue to get better and uh be able to uh continue to benefit employees.
Yeah, that was the one question I had, it was the timeframe, so that answered anything I I've got, you guys have any questions? You guys must be doing a great job, there's no questions in this room.
Okay, so kind of, Josh, can you just kind of talk through, you know, what next steps would be and uh how that would all look like?
So the the next step is actually a formal board resolution to um authorize the migration. Of the two plans from Lincoln to Voya and enter into service agreements with Vision and RPA. We would then work with Jackie, we'll get the paperwork, our team will coordinate getting the uh investment contract from Lincoln and service agreement. And we'll of course send you the RPA Vision, which is a single agreement, um, we'll get that to Jackie, Jackie will work with you and counsel if needed to. Get those finalized and executed, once those are done, we then let Voya know, and then Lincoln will coordinate with our support, the transition of the assets to Voya. Um, we, our goal is to try and complete this in the second quarter before your fiscal year ends. So that in twenty twenty, uh, so that July, future contributions can go to the, to the new provider. Um, and we will, uh, best efforts on that. Future contributions can go to the, to the new provider, um, and we will, uh, best efforts on that, you never know with contracts. Um, but we should, we we are, we're reasonably confident we should have it up and running. For the new fiscal year.
Timing wise, because you guys pay on the fifteenth and the thirtieth or. Mi- middle and end of the month, so. Um, yeah, that gives us till the middle of July. And there's a little, there's a little wiggle room on that too, so.
Who notifies Voya?
We will draft the letter from the county. To send it, has to, you're, the county is the owner of the investment contracts, so once everything is set up with Lincoln. With their contract, first we have to execute the Lincoln contracts, then it's a standard form letter that we will share with you. That authorizes, you let Voya know that you're terminating the contracts, and we give them the contact person at Lincoln and RPA and Vision. To coordinate the discussions.
And then the people here might want to know what happens with their money that is already. Yeah.
Mm-hmm. So part of that process will be, once, uh, we notify Voy and we have a sense of the timeline, when the money's gonna move. Meanwhile, we'll be drafting a participant communication and, uh, Peter's group will coordinate that with you. Where we're gonna distribute that to all active and retired, uh, participants, they get different contributions, anybody, uh, different communications. Any retiree, if they don't like what you're doing, can just do an IRA rollover and leave if they want to. Uh, Jackie, we had also talked about with that one nationwide person or two nationwide people, Peter's gonna reach out to them individually. And then for the active employees, we'll be looking, uh, again, to coordinate, uh, some onsite group meeting, couple of. Meetings, we can also do virtual meetings, hey, this is what's happening, more importantly, this is why it's happening. Um, you're gonna save money, you're gonna have access to Vision Group, uh, Financial Group for, uh, retirement counseling and investment advice. And essentially, you're gonna have. You, the names of the investments are gonna change, but they're all buying the same things, they're all buying the large, high quality US companies. Like Apple or IBM or, uh, all the different industries, so they're gonna have the same investments, just with a different name and a lower fee. And additional services.
Yeah, so, so, so just, if you got questions, just between, uh, Josh, Darren and I. We'll, uh, walk you through stuff here, but, uh. The initial piece here would just be the resolution that you guys would sign off on, so I'd. Passed along some sample language there that you could use, so. If we can get.
I didn't get to that on Friday, but we can do it next Monday if that's okay.
Of course.
Yep, so. So when we, yeah, so once you are able to get that to us, um, that is all signed off on, then that gives us the. Go ahead to. Be able to contact, uh, Lincoln and start. Start the process that J- Josh has just described.
Do you need one of us as a representative at that Monday, next Monday's meeting, or or is that now just on the? I don't want to say necessarily consent agenda, but. Ha- happy to be available if it's helpful.
No, I I think we'll be okay as long as we have the, the language in the resolution, we should be just fine.
Great. And Jackie, I'm happy if you, if you want to tweak the language and want us to review it, just send it back to Peter and I. Happy to work.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, we're excited about, uh, future partnership.
Any else for us, guys, or?
I think that's it, so appreciate it, we'll. Work with, uh, Jackie and Teresa and, uh. Make this happen for you.
Right, that sounds good, I'm sure we'll be talking in the future.
All right, very good.
Take care, everybody.
You guys have a great week, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Okay, how can I roll back on to? My supervisor weekly report. Um, actually. We do. Consent us to move forward on that, you guys? Bring a resolution to the table next week? I don't think we do, uh, it's true by resolution, but.
Right.
Unless there's something, for some reason, you guys don't want to. Do that.
No, not gonna save you.
They're going back into their account, that's a good deal for them, so.
Okay.
And they're taking care of most of all of. They're doing it all.
Yeah. Or, yeah, that's the big thing, if they're gonna. Help with transition of everything then. Okay, we'll move forward and hopefully see that next week then. Uh, my weekly report, I had, uh, obviously one more betco with these guys. And then I had, uh, night hog and Wednesday. Um. We've got all our insurance figured out with City and Mason City finally, so they're in a group plan with them. Uh, hopefully save them some dollars, they get the budget figured out. Um. Within less than a thousand dollars, tight budget, so. They're starting to see the repercussions of a lot of stuff too. Um, but it is there. So. Other than that, everything's running pretty, pretty good down there, now that, uh, all this stuff's out of the way, so. Um, and that's all I have left. Anything else need to go on the agenda in the future? Don't believe we've been invited to anything together.
May first thing, will you be at that? Will more than one of you be at that?
Maybe.
One or two.
Oh.
No, Papa John.
You can put it on right off.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd be great.
And was this coming next week?
Yeah. Hopefully department heads can be here.
Yeah.
For that part at least.
Yeah, if nothing else, yes, I think.
Yes, I was just gonna ask about that joint DD two and three meeting tomorrow. I was just gonna zoom in. That.
Yeah.
That would.
Before, we, do we all need to be, I mean.
I guess I think just if they've got.
If they've got some representation, that's their, they're the majority of the districts.
I thought we just need one representation, but I don't know.
You're gonna zoom with that degree.
Yeah.
I don't think we need a quorum.
Well, that's, I don't know, that's what I'm asking about, do we need a quorum? Fill Worth County on it. Do we need two of us?
Cause I don't think I'll be able to, because I've got. What time is it?
Ten, it's at nine forty five.
So I've got.
We can, and we're gonna ask if they need a quorum.
Right. Right up on Zoom, because.
Cause I'm gonna be in Mitchell County tomorrow morning.
And we've already got the Zoom link, right?
Is it?
Mitchell County means in the morning, then, uh. Care connections in the afternoon.
No.
Guess worth days, like, if need be, I could, I might jump on.
I'm sure all we gotta do is. Way in during accepting of the engineering. So, because they're gonna. Imagine we'll be in the vote on that.
Yeah.
So.
That's what I'm learning, if we need a, we need a quorum too, for them to accept our vote or review.
Involve.
I don't write that support on it.
Yeah.
You have that check and something, you know, and I'll jump on if I have to, so.
Okay. I'll be on there.
All right. Any others? Now to take a motion to adjourn.
I will take, I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Yeah, all in favor, I. Meeting is adjourned, thanks everybody.